2025 to order. Notice of option to recess into executive session pursuant to ARS 38431.02. Notice is hereby given to the members of the commission and to the general public that at this meeting, the commission may go, may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public. We would do that for legal advice and discussion with the commission's attorney on any item listed on the agenda today pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3. Now we'll do roll call.
Carol Mandino.
Present.
Joshua Mayer.
Present.
Christine Sheehy.
Here.
CJ Lukey.
Present.
Mary Norton.
Present.
Ian Sharp.
Present.
Megan Weller.
Present.
Thank you.
We are all here and in the house today. So right now it's open call to the public. And at this time, any member of the public may address the commission on any subject within our jurisdiction that is not scheduled before the commission today. Due to open meeting laws, the commission cannot discuss or act on items presented during this portion of the agenda. To address the commission on an item that is on the agenda, please wait for me to call for public comment at the time the item is heard. Is there any open call to the public? Anybody online? Hearing and seeing none, we will go on to approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on October 8th, 2025. If I can get a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
So Ian has, our Commissioner Sharp has made a motion to approve the minutes from October 8th, 2025. Is there a second?
Second.
And that was seconded by Commissioner Lukey. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We'll move on to public hearing. PZ 2400124-08. I think that's Ben, that'll be addressing us.
Good afternoon, Commission. My name is Ben Mahia. I'm a planner with the City of Flagstaff Planning and Development Services. For your consideration today, we have a conditional use permit request for a golf course and facilities. The project title is Pine Canyon Expansion. This request is filed by Gamage and Burnham PLC on behalf of STL 405 LLC to establish a golf course use on a 20.86 acre portion of approximately 126 acre vacant parcel in the rural residential zone. And while it is currently 126 acre parcel, there is a subdivision that the applicant is currently working towards, so it'll be a tract within that subdivision. But at this time, it is, it is the full parcel. The proposal is for a private amenity for the members of Pine Canyon and will serve as a common space for the planned residential development. To the north of this site is vacant land in the rural residential zone. To the west is the existing Pine Canyon area, which is single family subdivision in the single family residential zone or R1 zone. To the south is the Coconino National Forest in Public Lands Forest Zone. And to the east is additional vacant land in the rural residential. And then if you go a little farther, the estate residential zones. The proposal is for a nine-hole golf course on 20.86 acres. Again, it will serve as common space for planned residential development that surrounds it. There is temporary parking shown on the plans. They will, as their kind of future development plans flesh out, redesign the parking for this area to be coordinated with the rest of their development. There are no buildings associated with the golf course. It is just, just golf course, just turf and associated landscaping. For a conditional use permit, there are three required findings of approval. They are under 10, 20, 40, 50 of the zoning code. The first finding is that the conditional use permit is, the conditional use is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code and the purpose of the zone in which the site is located. The rural residential zone applies to areas of the city appropriate for both housing and limited agricultural uses that preserve the area's rural character. This zone is predominantly large lots, single-family development. However, it does allow for cluster and planned residential developments, which provide opportunities for higher densities. I'll briefly say that that's not entirely accurate. And, but going back into the intent section of the zoning code, it says the rural residential zone applies to those non-urban areas of the city that can, cannot be the utilization, cannot be economically and efficiently provided with city services associated with urban living. As such, it is designed for the utilization and enjoyment of the city's unique mountain environment with a minimum amount of municipal services and improvements. This zone is also intended to be used to protect against premature development in areas on the fringe of the urban service area. So golf courses provide an opportunity for its users to enjoy the city's unique mountain environment, as is described in the intent section of this zone. And the only municipal service that is required for this proposal is reclaimed water. There is no requirement for sewer or other infrastructure to support this development. And the reclaimed water will be serviced through an extension to the existing private reclaim system that runs through Pine Canyon. Finding two, the granting the conditional use will not be detrimental to the public health, safety and/or welfare. And that's broken into three sections here. Property damage or nuisance arising from noise, smoke, odor, dust, vibration or illumination. No nuisances generated arising from noise, smoke, odor, dust, vibration or illumination are anticipated beyond what is typical for the zone and surrounding uses. The development uses, or the proposal uses landscaping and resource protection areas to buffer active play areas from adjacent residential lots. The second part of this is hazard to persons or property from possible explosion, contamination, fire or flood. No hazards from possible explosion, contamination, fire or flood are anticipated with the proposed use. The applicant states that golf course management reduces fire risk when compared to current conditions. They also state that all fuel and chemicals will be safely handled and managed. And the project incorporates stormwater management facilities to mitigate any flood risks resulting from this development and the surrounding subdivision. And then the third part of finding two is impact on surrounding areas arising from unusual volume or character of traffic. This is a private amenity for Pine Canyon members. The applicant does not anticipate a great deal of traffic generation because it's, it's the residents, the residents or the members of Pine Canyon that have access to this site. Finding three. The characteristics of the conditional uses as proposed and as it is, as it may be conditioned, are reasonably compatible with the types of uses permitted in the surrounding area. The CUP shall be issued only when the planning commission finds that the applicant has considered and adequately addressed the following to ensure that the proposed use will be compatible with the surrounding area. And I'll go into each individually. The first, or A is access, traffic, pedestrian, bicycle and vehicular circulation. Again, this is a private amenity. Traffic generation is anticipated to be minimal. John Wesley Powell Boulevard, which will be developed to the north of this site, provides a sidewalk along the site's northern boundary. Vehicular and non-vehicular access to the site will be shared along private streets. Those streets do not have sidewalks on them, but they are intended to be the primary points of access to this site. B, adequacy of site and open space provisions, including resource protection standards where applicable. This project serves as an active common space amenity for the associated PRD subdivision. The proposal maintains a forest preservation rate of 69% on the golf course tract, exceeding the 50% preservation rate of residential zones. This will be further evaluated during civil plan review. There is a condition that staff has recommended regarding specifically resource protection to ensure that as the plans get fine tuned, that the preservation does not fall below what is required in code. Finding three, C, noise, light, visual and other pollutants. An outdoor lighting permit will be required to show conformance with code standards for lighting zone two. Three, D, proposed style and site, sighting of structures in relationship to the surrounding neighborhood. There are no structures proposed as part of the golf course use. The design of the site will be compatible with the adjacent Pine Canyon development. Finding three, E, landscaping and screening. A preliminary landscape plan has been approved with the site plan, providing the required street buffer, peripheral buffer and parking landscaping. Further, the plant species and sizing have also been reviewed and found to meet code requirements. Three, F, impact on public utilities. The applicant has made improvements to irrigation strategy of the existing Pine Canyon golf course, which reduces the overall water demand and allows for them to use that, that surplus in this area. The amendment to the reclaimed water agreement that was executed on September 29th, 2025, extends the place of use to accommodate this proposal. And the amendment also reduces the annual allotment of reclaimed water by approximately 30% from 360 million gallons of reclaimed water to 253 million gallons per year with a monthly cap or maximum not to exceed 27 million gallons per month. The reduction in reclaimed water results in a net positive impact on public utilities and allows allocation of reclaimed water to other potential users. And that's because with your original allotment of 360 million, they've, they've reduced that allotment and now, now the city has reclaimed water that can be given to other users. Three, G, signage and outdoor lighting. All signage and outdoor lighting will comply with signage and outdoor lighting standards. They will be separate permits if, as required. Three, H, dedication and development of streets adjoining the property. Dedication and development of streets will occur through the subdivision process. Three, I, impacts to resources. So this is both historical and natural resources. So the first I'll talk about is the historical resources. There was a cultural resource study that was done for this area that did not identify any historical or prehistorical resources. That being said, the staff has been notified of the requirements in the event of inadvertent discovery of cultural resources or ground disturbances that were not captured in the scope of the cultural resource study. And going into natural resources, the proposal meets all of the slope category requirements for preservation and exceeds the natural resource preservation requirement for forest preservation, which is set at 50%. There again identified preservation rate of 68%. And staff's recommendation includes a condition that disturbance of tree canopy areas be evaluated at civil plan review. And that will allow for some adjustment of the preservation rate. For citizen participation, the applicant notified nearby property owners within 1,000 feet of the parcel boundary of this application via mailer and also held two virtual neighborhood meetings. The first was on July 2nd, 2025 at 5:30 PM and the second on September 18th, 2025 at 5:30 PM. The following concerns were raised in the neighborhood meetings. Traffic, water use, impacts on wildlife, impacts on the Arizona Trail and impacts on Pine Canyon membership and services. And with that, staff's recommendation, in accordance with the findings presented in this report, staff recommends that the request for the CUP be granted by the Planning and Zoning Commission with the requirements included in CUP number PZ-24-00124-08. And as follows, the development of the site shall substantially conform to the plans as presented with the CUP application. And that the final natural resource protection plan submitted with the simple engineering plans shall evaluate the disturbance to forest resources based on disturbance to canopy in conformance with section 10-50.90.070.C.8 of the Flagstaff zoning code. The final preservation rate of the site shall meet the minimum requirements as stated in 10-50.90.060 of the Flagstaff zoning code. I believe the applicant has a presentation for you as well and staff is available for any questions.
Okay. Thank you for the great presentation. And does the commission have any questions for staff at this time? Mary?
And I was wondering if either you or Tiffany could explain some historical background that required golf courses to now have a CUP effective 2011. And what I came across was a zoning code interpretation letter that was written by Tiffany in June of 2024 that explained why this golf course amenity would require a CUP. And the reasoning being that CUPs were now required on golf courses due to the impact to water's resources. So I wonder if maybe there's some background that we should share with the public and the commission. Secondly, has any golf course had a CUP or gone through the CUP process since 2011 when that went into effect?
I am not aware of, of the history of conditional use permits for, for golf courses since 2011. I believe the interpretation letter that you're referring to was to resolve a concern as to whether a conditional use permit was required for a resident amenity. And it was that the resident amenity on its own is not a use unless it is a golf course. And that, the fact that it is a golf course established what, what the land use was and therefore required a conditional use permit. I was kind of hoping Tiffany would show up, but I think I must have gotten it right.
And it's, it's really in just doing my homework, it just came up on a Google search, frankly. So it's a, it's a letter that's out there for, in the public domain. So that's how I came up.
Posted on the city website as well.
Yeah.
What's that? I think Tiffany wanted to make a, Tiffany, did you want to speak?
We were requested, it was a formal request for an interpretation about what would require a conditional use permit. And so that interpretation is posted on our website along with any other interpretations that have been made. But Mary stated exactly what is in that interpretation. So when Pine Canyon was originally constructed, there was not a requirement for conditional use permit for a golf course, but that did change.
Could you speak to why, the reasoning behind golf courses and cemeteries being pulled from that and requiring CUPs? I mean, is the only thing that we have to work from in evaluating a CUP for this usage? Is that with, just with regard to water sources? Cause that's what triggered it being removed and requiring a CUP? Or I just want to see the parameters of what we really need to consider.
Me and I would, so it's been a while since I wrote that interpretation and I haven't looked at it in a minute. So I think it's been over a year since I've even looked at it. So I apologize, I wasn't prepared, prepared to present on the sort of aspects. I would just rely on what is in the contents of that zoning interpretation to date. And I wouldn't want to speak without reviewing it again, so.
So, but no other golf courses have come before the department or the, or the commission that has needed a CUP. So this is precedent setting potentially.
I don't know that it's precedent setting. I mean, it would be maybe, I guess it's the first conditional use permit, but I don't know that it sets a precedent because each individual permit is reviewed individually.
Yeah. And I think, again, I think that that, that interpretation was just questioning the land use and the process. And I think as far as reviewing this application, because it's a conditional use permit, you look at, you look at all the findings. As Ben pointed out, one of the findings does address infrastructure to support this and that, that the major infrastructure supporting this is that use of reclaimed water. So I, I think that's where the reclaimed water comes in, but I would not say that's, that's the only thing we're looking at. We're making sure that, that all those findings are being met.
And then that would be, my question is, what is the capacity for reclaimed water for the city? I mean, and how much will this?
You know, I'm not, I don't work for Water Services, but we do have Mac, McNamara, who may be able to address your question about reclaim for the city.
So again, the question is, what is the capacity for reclaimed water and how would this impact that?
Yeah, so I can hop in. So Mac McNamara Engineering Section for Water Services for the city. So currently in our peak months, May, June, July, August, September, we're 100% allocated for reclaim. We do have a surplus in the winter. This amended user agreement gives us back roughly 3 million gallons per month that we can reallocate to others that are of express interest right now in those peak demand months.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Before you go away. So most of our reclaimed water contracts have a renewal date. Do these ones have renewal dates?
Specifically this one, this new user or this amended user agreement does. I think it's a five-year user agreement right now. And I believe that's, and I do believe that's typical for all of our, most of our reclaim user agreements.
And who uses the most reclaimed water? Well, is there a certain business or certain company?
You know, so in the, in the summer months, all of our, most of our public parks use reclaim. We've got several golf courses that use reclaim. And then winter, the biggest user would be Snowball. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me. I could get those for you tomorrow if you'd like.
I don't know that that's necessary, but thank you. Cause you, I think you hit on the top users, so thank you. Any other questions from commissioners? We'll move to the presentation from the applicant. And please state your name and, do I have to ask that for the applicant? State their name and address for the record? Does, does the applicant need?
I'm sure Lindsay will identify herself clearly. Chivalry is not dead. Thank you, Ben, for pulling this up. Slideshow play from beginning. Okay, there we go. Do you guys all see that? Chair, Vice Chair, for your record, Lindsay Shuby with the law firm of Gamage and Burnham, here on behalf of STL 405, my client. With me is Todd Severson and Hillary Turby, as well as Sean Creek from, from Gamage and Burnham. So thank you so much for your time. And a few questions, and I can speak to some of them. Again, you know, what is a conditional use permit? Right? I've been in front of you for a couple. We did the micro hospital. I think some of you were on, on the commission for that. We also did the conditional use permit for retail uses in industrial zoning. And so a conditional use permit, and they're used all across the valley, or you know, there is an assumption that the land use makes sense, but you want to evaluate the criteria as set forth. By the way, totally fibbing on a three-part test. That three-part test is like an 18-part test, because they have so many different subparts. But you look at the test and you look at all the elements and you see if you meet the test. As far as Vice Mayor, or Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Norton, and your question on precedent setting, you know, I would say that, that all uses are different, right? Retail use and industrial zoning doesn't always make sense. It depends on, on how it's laid out and we got a CUP approved for that. Their new golf courses in the valley that have night golf, right? The glow-in-the-dark balls and there's lights and there's music and all those things. You know, I would say that would probably not be compatible on a site like this. So all uses are different and that's the, the gift of this three-part test with many subparts is the ability to look at every use on its own. So a little bit of background, I will get to the test. Ben touched on it on his great presentation, Chair, I agree, he always, and I'll try not to reiterate too much. I'm going to give a little bit of background information that will help, you know, kind of explain why I believe and staff agrees that we meet the test. And then speak a little bit more to the two neighborhood meetings as we hosted them and any questions and comments we had there. But the blue outline on your screen, right, that is State Trust Land 405. We call it STL 405. The first phase of this development is 126 acres. It's a very weird configuration because it allows for the dedication of John Wesley Powell and, and the first phase of development of John Wesley Powell. So that's the purple, that's 126. It is planned to include by right residential development as well as this amenity, really leaning into the outdoor beauty of the area and outdoor beauty of the area. So the project proposal, again, we're zoned RR. The, the purple is the 126 acres and the green, right, is the low, is the amenity area. The amenity area meanders through the proposed homes. So again, tract B, which is in green, is 20.87 acres. And you know what's awesome? 7.9% acres, and Ben touched on this, is preserved. So 40% of the overall amenity is, is non, non-disturbed open space. This also again includes 54 home sites and then a meandering health and wellness path through it. So this is, and Ben showed this too. Again, this is, this shows our plat, so this shows the 54 home sites as they're going to exist, the JWP expansion. And then there maybe exist, or there will be additional residential that will be, come through either rezoned or platted in the future. But right now this plat allows for 54 homes and this amenity as well as the outdoor walking path. And yes, the, for easements and transportation, that's the strange looking land allocation we have there on our plat. So this specific proposal, this, and you know, it's interesting, 4.9 acres of turf. So you'll see later in the presentation, but Pine Canyon did improvements to their golf course. Again, this is just background information where they were able to remove 10 acres of turf and make improvements so they're using less water, which is why we could enter into that amended water services reclaimed water agreement, which is done, approved by council. And so we do have reclaimed water for this area. We do not need to ask for any more reclaimed water. 7.9 acres of this 20 acres is preserved. We have the linear trail, 4,335 feet. And then we also have streams and ponds for biodiversity. And then we also have streams and ponds for biodiversity. And I think one really interesting thing as we move forward to this development, you know, sustainability, we hear two things in Flagstaff, housing crisis and sustainability. And there are a lot of things that you can do with reclaimed water in terms of supporting wildlife and biodiversity. So this is just the first phase of development for State Trust Land 405. The balance is, is we're calling STL 340, and we look forward to coming to you with that, with a rezone case next year sometime. So what are some, the key points? Again, this is a nine-hole, non-commercial kind of pitch and putt course, practice course, as well as a small putting green. It also has a multi-use health and wellness trail and an integrated and thoughtfully-designed stream that's going to run through. Native and regionally-appropriate landscaping. We do have an engineering appeal request in to remove some of the required landscaping that requires excess reclaimed water. So that's in front of the engineering department now, outside of this request. And the project does not include any planned buildings, as Ben mentioned, limited hours of operation and limited traffic, as it is a private amenity. So what, what are the benefits? The project requires, again, less than four acres of turf. Pine Canyon proper golf course did remove 10 acres of turf a couple years ago. A normal, regular championship-sized golf course is 90 to 125 acres of turf. Here we have four. It'll minimize grading and, you know, allow us, limit the turf area to just play areas only. Really, this is a beautiful part of Flagstaff and we really want to limit grading and really enjoy the, the topographical, you know, Mother Nature, what Mother Nature gave us out there. The picture that you see on, on the top right-hand side of your screen actually is an Osprey nest at Pine Canyon. With the expansion, with State Trust Land 340 and the expansion of, of this small Pine Canyon expansion with the 54 lots, we're really looking forward to expand on the, the Osprey population that we have in Pine Canyon. And then this picture on the bottom is just an example of a pitch and putt course. Again, much smaller, far less turf than what's normally required. As stated in the staff report, now golf courses are great, they can reduce the severity and the spread of wildfire. That's an important element, right, in your regional plan as you guys are bringing forward. And we want to make sure we brought that to everyone's attention. Well-watered, closely mowed turf, again, only four acres of it can really slow down the potential negative impacts of wildfires that I know you guys have, have suffered with up here. So the Pine Canyon irrigation, and we hit this in both neighborhood meetings and did have some questions about it. Again, Pine Canyon voluntarily made irrigation improvements. They made 30% efficiencies where we can reduce the sprinkler head emissions on the existing course, and we took out 10 acres of turf. Again, this was a, we also voluntarily relinquished 30% of the water allocation in our, in our reclaimed water amendment earlier this year. And also, as Mac stated, gave back 3 million gallons per month in the peak season months. That was requested of your Water Services Director, and we were able to do that. So we're, we're really happy about that. We hosted the Water Commission on a tour on October 6th. 22 people participated and really hope that some of your other golf courses can follow the lead of, of this new technology. It was a big investment, and Pine Canyon did it without being asked a couple years ago. So the new amenity, the new pitch and putt, again, it only is 3.75% of a traditional championship golf course. Four acres of turf, as opposed to the normal 90 to 125 acres that you find on a normal golf course. We actually did our neighborhood meetings virtually, and I said pitch and putt. And someone asked what baseball had to do with this. And so I was kind of standing up, and I'm like, not pitch, it's pitch, it's a small, but, you know, this is a small, a small amenity area. It's called, it is a golf course, but it is called a pitch and putt because it is multi-generational, it is family-oriented, and it's way different than the other golf course opportunities that you, that are available at Pine Canyon. Again, overall, and I want to focus on this, there is a net reduction, even if this is approved, of six acres of turf overall at Pine Canyon. And we are, this is proposed to be irrigated entirely with water that is in the existing Pine Canyon agreement. No other reclaimed water is going to be requested or, or needed for this application. And this is my last slide, and then I promise I'm getting to the test and then get to my conclusion. But Pine Canyon is a proud member of the Audubon. Took me actually a minute to learn that word. Apparently you guys in Flagstaff know that word better than I do, but Audubon Sanctuary Program for the Naturalization of Golf Courses. Reduces the need of gasoline, pesticides, fertilizer, and water. It lowers the maintenance cost. It allows for the diversity of plants and animals, improves water quality, minimizes erosion, protects ecosystems, and maintains the gene pool of plants and animal species. Because when we did take out those 10 acres of turf, we were able to revegetate with the natural vegetation that should have been there in the first place. And, you know, for the golfers, it adds natural beauty. That's, and that's a purpose also of this amenity that we have in front of you. It increases wildlife sightings and defines kind of play and non-play areas. So the additional amenity will also be a member of the Audubon Sanctuary Program. So CUP findings, right, the three-part test. It has more than three parts. The first one actually just does have one, right? The conditional use is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code and the proposed zone in which the site is located. And again, Vice Chair, that does get to the question, right? The zoning interp was from me, and we were asking Tiffany, if it's a private amenity, does it need a CUP? That was the intent of that question. Again, we're in the RR zone. The RR zone allows for the approval of a conditional use permit. It's, it's consistent with the objectives of, of the district. As Ben also stated, the outdoor amenity space creates a sense of community along with the meandering trail that goes through. It has been thoughtfully designed in terms of, again, respecting the natural topography, limit grading, and then allow for the stream to go in there for biodiversity and wildlife opportunities. Number two, so the two, the number two has three parts, and Ben already brought you through this, but again, just to reiterate, we need to ensure, right, there's no property damage or nuisance arising from smoke, odor, dust, vibration, or illumination. This is from state statute. No. We, we will not have any of those things. There's no smoke, there's no odor, there's no dust, and we will be dark skies compliant. Not a hazard to persons or property for explosion, contamination, fire, or flood. Again, as mentioned by Ben, we're outside of the flood plain, we don't have any flood issues here. We will adhere to all relevant health and safety codes as far, falls, as far as fires and chemicals. All of those are already safely stored on, for the Pine Canyon golf course, and this is just a relocation of some of the golf turf that we already had. Again, in our natural slopes and drainage patterns, we very carefully integrated that into our plan. Impact on surrounding areas from unusual volume or character of traffic? No, this is a private amenity, right? For better or for worse, it is. Therefore, as far as this part of the test, I believe we meet it. There'll be a golf cart, bicycling, as well as, as some vehicular connection, but it is a non-commercial amenity, therefore will not add to traffic in the area. The three-part, this is the funny one, the number three has nine parts, but Ben got through them and I'll do it too. Again, the first, and this is the surrounding areas, right? We want to make sure that we're being a good, I call this kind of the good neighbor policy. Again, traffic, pedestrian, bike, vehicular, no, this is a non-commercial element. As Ben stated, there is a sidewalk along the new proposed John Wesley Powell and connectivity through a road that we're calling Telluride to the existing Pine Canyon development. All multimodal circulation is being encouraged and provided. Adequacy of site common open space, including resource protection where applicable. Ben really hit on this, and I appreciate it. Again, the resources, the tree resource protection that's required is 50%, and we've got 69. I remember when I came to you on that 1.8% deviation on slope, but here we far exceed it, and on both, right? We exceed slope, we exceed trees, and that's part of why we want this. We want to lean into the natural beauty and aesthetic of the area with an outdoor use. Noise, light, visual, and other pollutants. Again, this is, are you a good neighbor? We will. Any lighting will require a different permit, and we intend to be dark sky compliant, dark sky compliant. We do not intend any light pollution to any of our neighboring property owners. The proposed style, style and sighting of structures, it's going to be okay? We don't have a structure. Good, check, we've got that one. Again, this is a fully outdoor amenity, and I think this is important too, in looking at the CUP test and, and not this part of the test, but there are other things we can do by right. And, and I got myself a little, I got some residents mixed up on the, on the first neighborhood meeting, because I talked about, and I spoke to, you know, we could do pickleball by right. We can do buildings by right, but it's this use that we need a conditional use permit for. Those are non-pervious, they potentially have more noise and, and those types of things. But I would argue, you know, our nice nod to the outdoors here will not have a negative impact on our neighbors. Landscaping, screening, including additional landscaping, meets the minimum requirements. Correct, we will meet the minimum requirements. We have asked for reduction on some of the landscaping that's required by code that uses an excessive amount of reclaimed water, and, and we're working through engineering on that one. But again, envisioned to be natural and character, indigenous to the Flagstaff area. Impact on public utilities, as Alex said, right, this is one part of the nine-part test on number C, but we don't need sewer, we don't need potable water, it's just reclaimed water, and the agreement is already approved, so we don't need any more reclaimed water. There is reclaimed water that is allocated to Pine Canyon Golf, and, and it will meet the needs of this amenity. As well as gave 3 million back per month, we're really excited about that, and 30% overall. Signage and outdoor lighting, again, we will, it'll be minimal, harmonizing with the surrounding area, and will be dark skies compliant. Dedication and development of streets adjoining to the property. Yes, our pre-plat was approved, our final plat will be approved. With this, we dedicate the, the entire John Wesley Powell corridor that goes through the entire State Trust Land 405, and will help spur that development, which is really important to the region, and, and we're really excited about. All the interior street, streets will be dedicated, the plat process is underway, we're in the final plat process now. Impact on historic, prehistoric, and natural resources. Again, exceed slope, exceed trees, and there are zero, there's cultural resource study and there are no prehistoric issues with this site. So I submit to you that we meet this finding. Also, I would say, I believe with this amenity, again, as opposed to other amenities that we could do by right, like pickleball, like, you know, things that, that are allowed and, and concrete and all those things, that we really do already foster native biodiversity on the site. We want to preserve natural habitats and support local habitat and local wildlife and plant species. So we see this as an extension, and then again, when we get back, back in front of you for State Trust Land 340, the intention is for that continuation to support the biodiversity and wildlife in the area. So neighborhood meetings, again, we had two. What were the questions? Traffic and construction, right? There will be a new entrance off of John Wesley Powell, so it will not go through the existing Pine Canyon development or impact neighbors in other ways. Membership and access, there were a lot of questions about that. It will be, this is an existing, this will be added to the Pine Canyon membership, and that's what the use is for. How, how big is the course, right? Again, this is much smaller. This is 3.75% of a normal three. You know, four acres of turf versus 90 to 125. So while it is a golf, and again, Vice Chair getting to your question, is this a precedent? Well, maybe, and maybe a good one, right? If you want a golf course, you can have four acres of turf instead of the 90 to 125 that a normal golf course requires or asks for. This amenity will, housing and community character, again, as part of the plat, we have 54 more homes, and then we'll have more residential opportunities. Don't think that has anything to do with the CUP test, but it was a question that was asked. Water and sustainability, at the time we were going through our meeting, we had not yet amended our agreement, but the answer to the public was, we were working with the city on the reclaimed water agreement for Pine Canyon and, and expanding it here. We were also asked about the Arizona Trail. There have been many discussions, I'm sure you all followed the regional plan very carefully. The Arizona Trail was, well, originally was supposed to go through the State Trust Land property, then there was an idea of taking it more through the Rio de Flag, through the Little America property. I think that was not necessarily accepted for those property owners at this time. And so you'll see with our rezone, again, has nothing to do with this application and nothing to do with the CUP test that you have to look at tonight, but the Arizona Trail will go through the balance of our property, and we actually have redesigned our entire rezone to lean into the Arizona Trail, biodiversity, and five parks that will be open to the public. We're really excited about our, our rezone that gets to come in front of you. And yes, and the trail does not intersect with the amenity in any way. There was also a question about the existing use of the Pine Canyon golf course. Again, that's outside of the, the test. So our first neighborhood meeting was July 2nd at 5:30. We had 51 members of the public and 10 members of the development team. Second neighborhood meeting, September 18th, seven members of the public, five members of the development team. Again, overwhelming communication, we're either in support or just inquiring, as well as two communications that were negative. Alex has a copy, Alex has a copy, and also one thing that's interesting, as Ben said, we notified 1,000, 1,000 feet around. We were only required by code to do 300. We did, staff asked for it, I didn't volunteer to do 1,000. Staff asked for 1,000, we agreed to do 1,000. So we did triple the notification. These, what Alex has are letters, and there were some, when I was reviewing the staff report, I saw there were only four letters. We had more, I don't know where they all came from, but again, overwhelming support from the community. We have 15 letters of support to an opposition. We're really excited to be here, we have a recommendation of approval from staff and respectfully, respectfully request approval from the commission. And apologize, you got these letters in advance or late, but I also didn't want to say in front of Alex and Ben that we had seen more letters, so we wanted to make sure everyone had them. Respectfully request approval and stand for questions.
Yes, I have a couple of questions, and I'll ask other commissioners. So you, you're talking about there'll be no building, so how will people register for this course, if they want to get on this course? How will they go about doing that?
Chair, that's a great question. Again, will be all managed through Pine Canyon. And so at this point, I don't know if there's going to be reservations, if it's going to be more, you can just come up and, and play a few holes, but it'll be managed the same way and through the clubhouse, the existing clubhouse for the existing Pine Canyon golf course.
So is this a walking course, or would this be also a course where there would be golf carts?
And, and I can get, I'm going to, I'm going to start, Chair, and then Todd is going to correct me if I'm wrong. It will, I would assume it will be mostly a walking course. Again, there is the meandering path that goes through. If you have any type of accessibility issues or you need a, a cart to help you get through, I'd imagine most people will walk, but there is the ability for the golf cart to go through as well. Correct? Oh. Todd is going to come up, he's going to say his name and address for the record, and then he will give a succinct answer to you.
Thank, thank you very much for giving my spiel.
Good evening. Todd Severson with Symmetry Companies and STL 405 is the applicant. Yeah, we're currently exploring both routes, whether we make it a walk-only course or a golf cart access, but the intent is to continue to, to operate it at a enjoyable level. And so it's currently 1.3 miles and about 220 feet of elevation change, and knowing that it's multi-generational, we want to make sure that both children and grandparents can enjoy that walk. And so we need to build the paths as if they will accommodate a cart in case that's needed.
So the walking path and the cart path, will those be one and the same? So the walking path and the cart path, will those be one in the same?
They are. And so, and a lot of our residents and members use those cart paths in non-golf hours, um, pre and post kind of, um, you know, typical golf, um, tee time hours.
Okay. And then I, I guess my other questions, because some of these letters were put on our agenda. So we had some advance on, um, two of the letters that were negative. One talked about, uh, major elk herd passing through that area. And that it's a birthing area. Has there been any study on that?
Actually, yes. Pine Canyon has historically worked with Arizona Game and Fish. Um, one of the concerns that they've had, um, as development, uh, pushes out in this area, sometimes the, the kind of more extra vegetation that comes with Pine Canyon landscaping, uh, actually attracts, uh, the elk in a non-positive way. Uh, it increases their population beyond a healthy, um, kind of herd limit. And so Arizona Game and Fish would actually like to see the herd pushed out back into the forest, um, to ensure that, you know, kind of herd sizes maintain a healthy level for the elk themselves, whether that's disease or, um, kind of overconsumption of resources from, from the animal side. So we have had those conversations with Arizona Game and Fish, um, regarding elk habitat.
So are you saying that currently the elk herd is too big with the current? Or that it could expand once the golf course was built? And that you're going to somehow limit elk being on the golf course?
Our approach was to, to try to work with them to understand how we could, um, not encourage the elk to come on to the golf course. Um, other golf courses have that issue as well. It kind of creates an artificial habitat for them. But, uh, so at, at times we had discussed alternative, um, you know, measures to help meet that, uh, need to push elk away from development, uh, in which they indicated that obviously the future development of JWP will help that as well as there'll be more residences and more traffic along JWP.
Chair, Chair, I'd say, I'd say from a, you know, from a land use perspective, right? That you guys as a planning is a, Todd is working closely with game and fish to support the elk and also support, you know, to make sure there's not overpopulation. Um, I'd say, you know, and Todd, correct me if I'm wrong. You're, everyone loves the elk. They love the elk out there. They're fun to look at when, when people are playing golf. We want to be supportive of their natural migration patterns, right? If it's up the Rio. Again, this is a natural habitat, which will encourage wildlife, the osprey we love. And the osprey are great because they're up above. Uh, and, and hopefully, you know, with the trees, we'll have more offspring. I think just the, the Pine Canyon ownership has worked very closely with game and fish to protect, um, to protect the elk population and, and to work with game and fishes to the best way to support, to support them one way or the other, right? And that you just don't want an overpopulation and create an artificially safe environment. Yet at the same time, we want to support the elk and, and where they should naturally be migrating.
Right. I get, I guess my question is, is the elk herd too large now? Or is it predicted to be too large if you did not have something to block them from the golf course?
Their concern is that it's too large now, um, and that it's not necessarily, um, it, it's just a, it's a situation that they have around Pine Canyon, around that area of town. It's not specific to something that we're, we're doing or creating. They just have concerns.
Okay. Thank you. And then, um, I'll ask for other questions while I think about my other question as well. So are there other questions from commissioners? Mary?
I, I did watch the city council meetings when you did your symmetry presentation on STL 340, as well as your, um, reclaimed water amendment. So I've seen some of this, but I want to make sure, um, and kind of for the record here, is this the only golf course amenity of any kind that you have intended for the entire 405 acres on state land?
Chair, vice chair, very good question. Yes, the rezone application that is in with planning right now. We just responded to our, with our first round of, our first resubmital. We, we submitted in August, does not include a golf course, correct? There is no intention. There was. We had an application in that did have a golf course, um, gosh, a year and a half ago. That has been withdrawn. The new rezone that hopefully will come in front of you. The amenity set is definitely Arizona Trail, five parks, uh, and includes zero golf courses.
And can I piggyback on that question? So, um, that was another question of mine was that 10 years down the road, do you see an extension of this nine-hole golf course to being an 18-hole golf course?
Chair, great question. No. I mean, the where, where it is now, there's no intention of that. Um, it's nestled in between 54 homes. I mean, it's very, and it's very specific. We're conditioned on the, the specific site plan. There is other area in the 126 acres. There is, the plan that is in front of you right now does not include any extension of this nine holes to be 18, nor any golf on the northern portion.
Thank you. Mary?
Yeah, I just wanted to touch on the golf court, a golf cart and scooter access, um, which would end up going across JWP. Being that I live across from Pine Canyon, I see golf courts and scooters zip across JW Powell all the time, just to get into Pinnacle Pines or Juniper Point. Um, I would encourage that you not encourage further traffic of golf court, uh, golf carts and scooters across JW Powell, especially as it develops out into this major arterial road. So that would be, um, a concern there that I hadn't even thought about until, uh, that was brought up. So yeah, and I'm very familiar with the large elk herd and the way they split up at during ti-, different times of their life cycle during the year. Unfortunately, I've seen hazing going on, uh, that Pine Canyon that, um, does stress the elk and pushes them into running. I've seen the newborn calves, all that. I, I share those concerns. I don't know what the answers is. I'm glad you're coordinating with game and fish. But it, you know, I, they were here too. They were here first too. So, uh, that's all I'll have to say about that is just that what I've witnessed. Thanks.
Chair, if I may, just vice chair to answer your question. The golf carts would come through a road called Telluride that will be parallel to JWP. So hopefully there would be no golf carts crossing or on JWP that it can come through. Again, because this amenity is south of JWP.
Thanks for that clarification.
Any other questions from commissioners? Thank you very much for your presentation and I will open this up to the public. So I have two speakers for this matter. Nat White, if you'll come to the podium and please state your name and address for the record. And then you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Nat White, 1120 North Rock Ridge. And first of all, I'd like to thank you for volunteering to do what you do here. So thank you very much. I just want to share, um, an opinion and a related suggestion. Flagstaff population is some 70,000 and that, that population produces the source of reclaimed water. And it, from my, my opinion is it should be used for the public good. The value of reclaimed water will continue to increase as our drought continues. And if that drought is related to climate change, um, that's what the future holds for us. So reclaimed water is of great value. And therefore reclaimed water, you should be particularly principally for public purposes, purposes where the public has free, uh, or paid access. I appreciate the effort to design the golf course to minimize irrigation. I also appreciate Pine Canyon's new reclaimed water contract, which reduces the original total by amount of about 30%. And I also appreciate, uh, Pine Canyon's interest in preserving the natural resources. It just makes good financial sense. The fact remains though, a few hundred people will exclude, exclusively benefit from a resource produced by the other 70,000 folks. Reclaimed water should be used for the public good. And my related suggestion is that reclaimed water contracts should go to the city council as a policy. It, it should not be a discretionary item. The reason is, as I stated before, it's a valuable resource and it may be more so in the future. So thank you.
Thank you, Nat. Next up would be Michelle James, who's with Friends of Flagstaff Future.
Hello, Chair and Commissioners. Michelle James, Executive Director of Friends of Flagstaff's Future. And, um, I'm just going to give you a, uh, just want to tell you that Nat and I did not coordinate on these comments at all, but they're very similar. Symmetry's proposal for a nine-hole pitch and putt practice course on a portion of Pine Canyon expansion will utilize the city's reclaimed water from Symmetry's existing allocation, which was recently set to 253 million gallons per year versus the previous 360 million gallons. The staff report outlining finding number three states that the reduction in overall reclaimed water use results in a net positive impact on public utilities, allowing reallocation of the water to other potential users. FQ believes that continuing to provide reclaimed water for private economic benefit is irresponsible. Eventually the city will need to use all available reclaimed water for direct potable reuse to meet public demand. Continuing to provide this water for private uses such as golf courses sets up the private landowner, in this case Pine Canyon, for eventual failure as a city claws back all or a significant portion of the reclaimed water it previously allocated. FQ understands that the city is not in a potable water crisis at this point in time. However, it is coming and perhaps sooner than we expect. The Flagstaff population is likely to grow as impacts of our warming and drying climate are felt throughout the region. The city will continue to await the $800 or more million dollars in funding from the federal government for the Redcap, Red Gap Grant Ranch Pipeline and the Treatment Plant. And then we'll wait multiple years for its completion. FQ believes the city must act now and start valuing its reclaimed water as, at a significantly higher level. One means of planning for the future, starting today, is no longer, to no longer provide reclaimed water for private benefit. For these reasons, FQ opposes the granting of the CUP to Symmetry. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments, questions? Okay. Okay. I'm sorry. That's for the next issue? If I'm reading it correctly for middle housing, so sorry. That's all right. Yes.
Those questions for, uh, Water Service Staff. Is there anything, uh, in policy that would, um, allow the city to, um, reneg on its current contract? Or somehow restrict use of, um, reclaimed water for, uh, private use?
Yeah, so this is Mac, Mac Mara again. I may defer to our legal department on that. That sounds contractual to me. Not sure if Christina is still online.
Yeah, um, Christina Rabelkow, Senior Assistant City Attorney. I am happy to answer any questions about the contract, but to be honest, we'll need to do that into executive session. If the commission wants to go into executive session, happy to talk about, um, the contract, but, but don't want to do that here in a public session.
I do not.
Chair, if I may, I also just wanted to, there are members of the public here who are in support and they've, I think they put in cards speak if needed, if they just want to raise their hands, people who are in support of this application, uh, and have can speak if needed, but wanted to make sure sometimes when two people speak and others don't, they wanted to make sure they're protecting your time. And, uh, yeah, Commissioner, I would just say it is a five-year agreement, right? And so they are revisited every five years. But not giving you legal.
Thank you. Any other questions? Discussion? Anybody want to make a motion?
If there's discussion, do you want to do it during the motion period? Or do you want us to discuss more now?
I suppose we can make a motion and then have discussion over the motion. Okay. Do you want to make a motion?
Regarding PZ 24-00124-08, I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission grant the conditional use permit in accordance with the findings and with the two conditions presented.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second? Okay. Now we can open the floor for more discussion from commissioners. Yes.
Thank you. I absolutely agree with what F3 said, and so I don't need to add any more to that. I've been studying a lot about water lately. And, you know, people say we have enough water for a hundred years. It looks to me from what's on our website and other data, it's more like 40 years. So we've really got to start looking at ways to recharge that groundwater. And I think once we get the reclaimed up to a tertiary standard, which is drinkable, it'll be safe to put into the groundwater. And so I don't want to tie up anymore.
Any other discussion? Mary?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through the findings as, as I interpreted them. The finding one talks about the consistency. And it talked a lot about the rural residential zoning and, you know, that this, um, how it fits into that. And, you know, the description that was used as far as how this is very, uh, rural and there's not a lot of services to the area. But yet keep in mind that the homes that are going to be there are going to have city water and sewer. And so it's not like this is an undeveloped area or an undevelopable area. Also just, you know, we always talk about state land, um, has this holding zone of RR. And it's, you know, the intention is, is that it gets rezoned and gets, uh, utilized at a, at a higher use. So, you know, I just felt that sort of that explanation of how this fits into RR and the fact that it is state, was state land, um, you know, was just, um, a little bit cherry picked in, in my opinion. Finding two, as far as, and we know that that is somewhat of a subjective finding in some cases. And so I was concerned about the welfare portion, because I do believe that the future welfare of the city could be harmed by this, being that water is a limited resource and this is an exclusionary use in a private community that doesn't benefit the entire public of, of the city. And in finding three, my, my issue with that is, is of course the impact on the public utilities. Again, you know, we're watering, we're watering golf courses. And we just spent so much time on the regional plan, talking about a housing emergency and a climate emergency. And yet we're approving a golf course. And granted, it's half the size, um, nine holes as opposed to 18. You know, but I, I think of it as like, if I spent a thousand dollars on something, a luxury item that only benefited me, but I got it for 30% off, I still spent 70, $700 on something I shouldn't have spent. And I, that's how I see with this water usage. It's like, you had this allocation. Yes, it's admirable and should be, um, modified to become more, um, and more efficient in our resource use. But it's still being utilized for something that I, I don't think is, um, a, a good use at this point in time and in, uh, for our future. So I will be voting no on this.
Any other comments or discussion? Commissioner Shi?
I just have an, um, an overall comment. You know, over my career, I've worked on a lot of golf courses, a lot of water issues. In water, I used to say to clients, if I start getting into it, it's just dangerous. There's so many components of it and we don't want to get into their contract tonight or any of that stuff. But I think overall it might be a good thing for an educational purposes to explain, you know, a little more detail, maybe a study session, how, um, these allocations work for reclaimed water. Cause some of this could be historic. There may be a green. There may be agreements that have been done years ago. And I mean, there's issues with paper water, there's issues with wet water, who has legal rights to the water. So I think it might be beneficial as we move forward, just from an educational perspective, to kind of get some overall education on this topic. So as we see other projects, we're more, I guess, informed. That's it.
Thank you.
I just have a few thoughts. So my personal opinion is, I'm not a big fan of golf courses. I don't think we need any more of them. But I don't think this is our role. And what I'm hearing are more policy decisions and not planning and zoning issues. And so again, it's outside of our role. And so if the city wants to change how we use reclaimed water, that's not something we can deal with. I think that's a larger discussion, and we're all just kind of yelling into the wind right now. I think in the end, if there is a lack of water in the future, it's going to be a self-correcting problem. Reclaimed water will find a different home. Right now, you can use it for its use, but the other thing I see reclaimed water as, currently, it's a waste product that needs a home. So you build golf courses, it gives it a home. Eventually, if there's a better use for it, we'll just redistribute it to that. So I don't see any reason to hold up this conditional use permit for the arguments presented.
Any other discussion or questions? Discussion? All right, I think we're ready for the vote. All those in favor of the motions, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
So we have two votes against and how many of our... Five votes for? Okay, the motion passes. Thank you very much, both Ben and our presenters. We'll move on to Issue 5B, PZ 2500027, Middle Housing Zoning Code and Text Amendment. Our audience leaves. Tiffany. Thank you.
Sorry. Tiffany Yantl, Zoning Code Manager, part of the Planning and Development Services Division, tonight, here to talk about the Middle Housing Text Amendment. We had a great work session. It was now three weeks ago. This still says work session. It was so great that I wanted to just reiterate that I'm just kidding. So I won't belabor all of these points. Again, I will go through and sort of summarize again. This is coming from the House Bill 2721. That's what initiates this middle housing conversation. We don't have that central business district. Again, we did a lot of work sessions and decided to take this particular amendment citywide and not limit it to just certain areas of the city. These are all of the things that 2721 does not allow us to do. So what does that mean? It means a lot of changes with inside of our code. Pretty much, you know, we're touching almost every chapter for different bits and purposes. A lot of times, it's just cleanup in terms of the administration. The short and simple is, anything that is considered to be a townhouse, a duplex, a triplex, or a fourplex, and remember that definition of those is kind of a little different than we would normally define duplex, triplex, and fourplex. And that's, it could be all in one building or basically four units on one lot. So if you're four units on one lot or less, you're going to be treated the same as a single-family home. So that means, in terms of how we handle permitting, how we handle our IDS review, all of those things will... You'll be treated the same as a single-family home. And so, single-family homes have a lot of leeway. Essentially, they go straight to building permit. We do not take them through our IDS process. So that will be a speedup for middle housing types. That's that common to procedures, that concept plan review, that site plan review. There's just a little cleanup in our non-conforming uses. Again, just trying to get the terminology throughout the zoning code correct and the same as we move on. In the general to all, because public improvements do not apply to individual, single-family homes, they will not apply to up to a fourplex. Public improvements still apply to all residential subdivisions. The same is true for site planning design standards. I did talk about the fact that this was the saddest part for me, but it's going to be okay. I'll live through it. On the specific to zones, you know, we changed our allowed use tables. And the use tables, instead of being dwelling, single-family, dwelling duplex, it's now going to be one-unit residential development, two-unit residential development, three, and then four. So that's a big change on all of these tables. In the specific to zone section, we have two versions of the code because there is an impact to high occupancy housing. So this is why I pulled the removal, a potential removal of a conditional use permit from single-family high occupancy housing from the last previous amendment. So let's talk about it. Like I said, we have to treat these middle housing types the same way that we treat single-family. So right now, in our code, we have a definition of single-family high occupancy housing, duplex, triplex. Anything above three was multifamily and so fell in this category. So I had to shake it up. There are two options here. The first option is to remove all high occupancy housing uses when they're under five units, and that is staff's recommendation. The second option replaces the single-family duplex and triplex and changes the high occupancy housing that is there now. Instead of four units and greater, it would be five units and greater, because that's what multifamily is. And basically, then we would have high occupancy housing less than four units. However, having to treat everything the same, right now, it's seven bedrooms or five bathrooms that trigger high occupancy housing for single-family home. So any one unit in a fourplex, then, under this version, would trigger a conditional use permit. The likelihood of seeing that is fairly low. In a four-unit development, seeing one unit that's seven bedrooms, it's not impossible. I don't want to say that it's never going to happen. The big change, if you do want to go with version two, is my big suggestion is to make it the seven bedrooms and bathrooms, because we've seen so many single-family homes just get triggered on bathrooms alone. That would be the recommendation here, and that is what's included in version two. So there is the differential. Staff does recommend that we go with version one. It makes a cleaner distinction in the code and is in alignment with the high occupancy housing plan as originally drafted. The specific to uses, I made one small fix in our accessory dwelling unit section. This was a cleanup. I had changed a requirement about water meters, and I was asked by the Water Services Division to put that back, and so that's what I'm doing. So I wanted to get that done as quickly as possible. And then, high occupancy housing section gets changed, basically as discussed, you know, those two versions. So we just have to change that section to reflect which version you want to go with. And then, mixed use, we did some clarification. So as we were going through the code, there were some issues with the... It's amended to clarify that mixed use is a combination of commercial uses and residential uses and not just a mix of commercial uses on the same site, as well as cleanup references to the regional plan. So that regional plan cleanup was part of the big reason that I pulled this. And also, as we adjusted the table, wanted some clarity in those mixed use standards for middle housing. All righty, transect zones. So basically, everything that I talked about, changing the land use tables for all of the residential and the commercial zones, for the transect zones, it's a little more complicated. I will tell you that this work almost killed me. This is the worst section of the code to try to fiddle with or adjust. Anywho, essentially, what it means is we had to go back and allow building types in each of these zones that were single-family, was allowed, that would allow up to four units on a lot. Now, our building types aren't perfect. So for example, a bungalow court can go up to six or eight units. In this case, in these zones that didn't typically allow for multifamily, we limited those building types to just the four units. So there is some caveats when we add in some of those building types, but it does change the T2, the T3, the T3N2. So T3N1, just so you know, is what actually exists out there in the world. T3N2 is something sitting in the code, that if a developer wanted to come in and use the form-based code, that's what would be applied. But there's nothing in the city's own T3N2 now. So. The transect zones, all of the allowed use tables were updated in the same way that the conventional zone allowed use tables would be done. I did also do a little bit of cleanup as well, because I forgot to update these tables previously when I made some changes. I maybe didn't forget, I just didn't want to do... No, I'm just kidding. I did forget. All right. Supplemental zones. So there's lots of other things that will no longer apply to four units and lower, and that includes architectural design standards. And I got to be really honest with you, architectural design standards on the size of building on a fourplex really amounts to, you know, a little bumpout porch and a belly band, and maybe breaking the building up so that it doesn't exceed a 75-foot wall plane. It's not a... It wasn't really ever huge to begin with. I would say the site planning design standards had more of an influence over the design of these buildings. So I just don't want you to cry over the loss of architectural design standards. Landscaping standards will not apply to these, or, you know, would be the same as single-family dwellings. Again, I will tell you, some heartburn I've had over trying to apply the landscape code previously to like a duplex, and all of a sudden, a duplex was required to have 10 trees and 20 shrubs, and you're like, what do we... I can't even fit it if I wanted to. So not a huge issue there. Parking standards, we won't require bicycle parking for residential developments of less than five units, because we do not require bicycle parking for single-family homes. In terms of the parking standards, the duplex, the townhouse, the triplex, and the fourplex, we cannot require more than one parking space per unit. So it only makes sense to make that true for single-family development. I can't remember the last time, though, that I saw, yes, that I...
So that's what I was noticing between the version one and two?
Mm-hmm.
Was that version two had higher parking rates? Is... So like a studio in version two has 1.25 spaces per unit?
I think that might be the affordable housing section.
So this is on... It's on page 60. I was, you know, if I'm looking at the two of them, those, that was one of the things, because it was like a two-to-three bedroom on the... Version two had two spaces per unit, a four-bedroom would have 2.5 spaces per unit, and a five-bedroom plus would have three. But on the other version, on version one, it was, I think, one parking space for studio, one parking space for bedroom, 1.2...
So I know I had a typo in version two. So hold on.
Yeah, because that was...
Didn't do something crazy.
I was trying to, you know, it's hard to kind of compare the two when you can only open one at a time. So... And I didn't want to print out 60-some-odd pages of paper and waste that. I was trying to go back and forth, but that was one of the things that I did note in version two, was a higher parking space requirement.
Hold on, please.
If you were to email me and ask me to print stuff out for you, I wouldn't say no.
Well, thank you, but I think, you know, when I'm looking at it at 4:00 on Tuesday afternoon, you're probably going to say no, because you may not be here.
You should see me when I'm working in this. I have to like blow it up really big to be like, where's the... Did I get that?
Yeah. So, no, I'm just, yeah, because I was looking at that, I had to do grading first, and then after my grades were done, I went and looked at everything. And that was, you know, I'm trying to compare the two, and it's really, like I said, hard.
So what happens in version two is there... So there's a table now that says residential development with less than five dwelling units. So, and that's one space per unit. And that's the typo that I had. I just had one space, and the clarification of per unit is in here now. So in version one, they're broken out one-unit development, two-unit development, three-unit development, four-unit development. In version two, they're collapsed into residential development with less than five dwelling units. So they are the same. The numbers that you're seeing apply to multifamily, which is five units and above. So when you see the 1.25 spaces per unit, that's for multifamily. So that doesn't apply to the middle housing type.
But that was different than the version one. Version one, the same page, had less parking.
Version one still has multifamily in it.
Right, but it had less required spaces.
Double checking. I knew I should have brought these up.
Again, it was on page... I'm on page 60 of 67. I just want you to work for your, you know, salary.
Nope, the multifamily is still there the same, 1.25 spaces per unit.
Okay.
They just structurally look different because the way that they're broken out.
Okay. So it's the same?
It is the same, it just looks a little different. And the reason why I then lumped everything as residential development was because they're in version two, there's a different parking calculation for high occupancy housing that is four units and less. So that's why they get grouped differently. Version two is the version that keeps high occupancy... A land use called high occupancy housing, four units and less. Version one does not keep high occupancy housing.
And then, my question is, why did you present? If the staff likes version one, why did you present us with two versions?
Because I had not had a pre-work session with you all on what would happen with high occupancy housing. This was something that evolved out of our legal review in terms of how we needed to treat these units the same as single-family homes and how that then impacted those HOH specifically. So for this, because of the timeframe in which we have to get this done, and this needs to be adopted by January 1st, the easiest thing to do was to prepare you for two copies. So, but whatever it is you recommend tonight, that alone is what I'll be taking to city council.
Okay. And I did, I looked it up, and you're right, it's the same. I, yeah, I'm looking at both. I don't know why I... I think I was looking at that second part.
I love your eyes, because it was already pointed out to me that I did have a typo, so.
Okay.
We're good.
Thank you. And you can proceed with your...
All right.
...presentation.
So I had to true-up this specific to building type table. Alls that is is a summary table of what building types are allowed and which zones. I like to call it one of those pitfall traps in the zoning code, where if you change something over here, you got to change something 80 pages later, because they're related, and we put them 80 pages apart. All right. So there are some changes to the definitions. We add new definitions of one, two, three, and four-unit residential development. You know, it was working with current planning, trying to figure out what was the best terminology, and really, we're trying to separate out that building type, again, from what the land use is. And the land use now is very clear about what it is. It's this many units as part of the development. This is also, that is also more in alignment with building code talk. So now zoning code and building code are going to talk a little bit better to one another. Other definitions, we would change the high occupancy housing, again, to versions based on what is adopted here. So if we do away with all of those, then high occupancy housing... So if we do away with all of those, then high occupancy housing becomes five units and above. If we keep some form of high occupancy housing, it, we add a new definition and there's new standards. And then lastly, we changed that mixed-use definition to make it really clear that mixed-use is residential and commercial. It's not just, uh, there were times when, um, some staff members would get confused because of the way it was worded. It made it seem as if multiple commercial uses on the same site were mixed-use and that was never really the intention. Mixed-use is really a mix of commercial and residential. So a shopping center, for example, that has restaurants and retail, we wouldn't consider that to be mixed-use. And here we go, findings. So the current regional plan is sort of silent on that term, middle housing. It's a, a new buzzword that's evolved since the adoption of our previous regional plan. But it doesn't mean that the current regional plan doesn't support this. It absolutely talks about having a variety and a diversity of housing types. Um, and that's exactly what middle housing is meant to do. Um, the new regional plan, just, I'm just gonna start throwing these in here just so you know. There is a very specific policy. What I would tell you is, is that there's far fewer policies in the regional plan overall. Like, so when you look in comparison, don't be alarmed, there's only one policy that addresses middle housing. It does address it by name, so it is supported, um, to be adopted. But it, or to, in reference to the regional plan, but just know that overall, there's a lot less policies in the new regional plan than there was in the old. Uh, the proposed amendment should not be detrimental to the public health, safety or welfare. Uh, this is about meeting the requirements of that recently adopted state legislation. Um, however, we are implementing this on a citywide basis rather than that limited basis as proposed by the legislation. Uh, also, the amendment is internally consistent. Yes, that's what took so much time getting this one out of the hopper is how many different pieces of the code we had to look at to make sure that we are keeping with the consistency. So staff recommends the planning and zoning commission, in accordance with the findings in the report, make a recommendation to the city council for approval of zoning code text amendment, PZ twenty-five, my version number one.
Thank you for giving us this wonderful presentation and for all your work on this and going from page one to page eighty, oh, whatever. And, uh, um, that's sometimes hard to do. I mean, it's not sometimes, it's hard to do. So thank you for that and we appreciate your work on this. Um, are there any questions or other concerns, Mary?
Even though I missed the last meeting, I did watch it the other day just so I could hear your discussion on this. And when I walked away from it, I thought, oh, I, I know which version I would want, but I want to clarify my understanding. Vers, does version one take, remove, um, any CUP process for HOH? Period.
Version one removes the land use of high occupancy housing, single-family, uh, duplex and triplex and converts and makes it, HOH only apply to developments of five units and above. So there is no HOH land use below, so there would be no conditional use permit. There are no limitations on those land uses as is the, in alignment with the high occupancy housing plan. So the high occupancy housing plan only applied to large-scale developments.
So it just, are you, are you removing whatever might get triggered in the same vein as the way the, like, the largest state homes get triggered with, with HOHs? Are you removing that potential for a trigger in whatever configuration might come across your desk with, in middle housing?
So we're removing the land use entirely, which means when somebody comes in with a single-family home that is six bedrooms and five bathrooms, it will not, there, it's just a single fam, it's one unit. It's that, that's just a, a single-family home and that's how we're gonna permit it.
I think I'm still confused on, um, potentially how much the guardrails of the HOH are being removed. Uh, and I think because my hesitancy, hesitancy with this is, you know, this being that this came from the legislature, we're required to put this in it. Yes, it makes sense because this is the kind of housing we do want to foster. Um, I, I'm always on guard for, you know, removing too many guardrails and unintended consequences. And, you know, I just keep thinking back to, you know, when they put short-term rentals into the legislation and we've been fighting on everybody's behalf for ten years now. I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna have us lose the ability to, um, catch something crazy that might start coming up out of this legislation. Like, was there any ulterior motives by those that lobbied for such legislation? As a, beyond the, the good, the goodness of creating more hot housing?
So I, I don't think that there was much thought to how this middle housing would impact this type of land use, this high occupancy housing. I know that Tucson was struggling in their code as well. While they don't have high occupancy housing, they had some other things. And really what they call them are mini dorms in Tucson. Um, which I, so in Flagstaff, it's one of two things. It's either a very large-party, short-term rental house, right? Or it is, um, a mini dorm. It's one of those two that generally most folks seem to take issue with in terms of large homes. I, I live next to a, I think it's, I think it's like a seven-bedroom house. It's pretty, it's pretty substantial, right? But it's just, it's just a family that lives there and it's not an issue. You know, the big issues with, with STRs, um, is, you know, their parking issues and party issues and all those kinds of things. Um, I think there's other ways that we can look at addressing that, at addressing that. And the same, and same with that sort of mini dorm idea. So right now, I, I have a list of upcoming text amendments. One of those is group living. We will be looking at the definition of family. That is probably the more appropriate route to go, to look at in terms of the number of unrelated folks that we have living, we allow in a, in a structure, while at the same time still making accommodation for group homes um, that meet the needs of ADA or ADA-qualified folks. So we can separate those two out. We've sort of led the issue through our definition, but there's some work to be done. There are definitely risks where we go from here. Um, the point, uh, today about high occupancy housing is, is I cannot keep high occupancy housing for duplex, triplex and for, and four units the way it is today. It has to mimic that single-family. Um, and if you think it's still, i- i- if the commission still feels that it's viable to make the trigger be seven bedrooms and five bathrooms as high occupancy housing, I, it's fine, that's why that's there to be presented into you. That's what we can do in terms of high occupancy housing. As staff, I'm going with what the original intent of the high occupancy housing plan was, which was to simply remove it. Because had I removed it out of the code previously, had I removed the single-family conditional use permit, we would be in this, we would be where we are with staff's recommendation. Um, I didn't want to do that without having this full conversation with you about now what middle housing would do. So you can see what the options and what it looks like. Version two is kind of messy. It doesn't really, it doesn't even meet the intent of what the original code was doing, but that original code went so far beyond what, um, the high occupancy housing plan intended to do. Um, so, you know, we've never had anybody come forward with a conditional use permit on anything other than single-family for high occupancy housing. So it's hard to tell you what the unintended consequences would be. And the number of Prop two oh seven waivers we have are all predominantly in that range that would accommodate middle housing. So there are a lot of folks out there that, by the way, already have two oh seven waivers.
All right, are there? Any other, I'm, I'm trying to think because I'd like to know, again, go over the differences, the major differences, not all the differences. Because there weren't, I don't think there were minor differences between version one and two, but you say version two is messy. And when I really read through them, I, for some reason, I like version two better, so.
Version two simply is just about high occupancy housing. It's that you would keep high occupancy housing for units and less. And that's if any one, and the only thing that triggers it is if any one unit is seven bedrooms and five bathrooms. And that's why it's messy. I think the likelihood of you honestly seeing somebody come in with a fourplex that has a seven-unit bedra, or ba, or unit in it is, is low, is unlikely. I mean, of the triplexes that I've seen, that people were most concerned with, they were five bedrooms.
And again, last time when we discussed, I think I asked if there could be some kind of, like you did with the, um, ADUs, that there could be some type of a plan where you would have a, you know, mapping out of certain triplexes, duplexes, how they might look? Like, they could come and get a plan from you rather than having developed their own plan on duplexes, triplexes and fourplexes? I don't know if that's, yeah, I think I asked that last time. You said, yeah, you could do that, but I don't know if that would be in the.
Well, we have, there's another state bill right now that is forcing us to come up with house plans. What gets tricky at triplex and fourplex is you're generally involving a design professional, um, whi, which isn't always required on the single-family. So there are some other building code issues. They, they're, the building code still looks at these differently. The building code is not looking at them as, as if they are all single-family. The legislature tried to write the bill this way, that way. They wanted to put, it's, their, their attempt was to make the IRC apply, the International Residential Code, apply to, up to a fourplex. They, however, did not write it correctly. They wrote the commercial code, like, commercial code doesn't apply. Well, no, but that's, that's not the correct language. So my understanding is, is that most of the building officials in Arizona have not moved that forward and are not because the, the, the law has to say what it means, right? So when you write the law, it's got to say what it means. It doesn't say that the IRC shall apply to all of these. It was, not all of these laws come out written really well. So anyway, um, the, the long and sweet and short of it is that we, you know, there's a trick on the triplexes and fourplexes that they apply to different building codes. Um, and they generally require a design professional that's different than on a single-family home. So we, we can, I can absolutely bring that to the building official. We are already mandated to have that done, so we will have it done for ADUs. We are mandated to have a whole nother round of it done by July of next year just for single-family homes. And there has to be multiple options for those as well. There's a lot to do in the pipeline, a lot of work to do.
Is there, are there any other questions or concerns? Yes.
Madam Chair, um, first I want to thank you. This is a yeoman's job doing this and, um, it's very complicated in having to pull all this together. I can appreciate that. Um, as far as the two choices, I would support choice one that the staff is recommending because we were seeing all these, um, conditional use permits on just large homes. And it's an expense for housing. We're trying to reduce the cost of housing. It didn't seem like it did anything because they were just big houses. The short-term rental is a whole separate thing we can't even deal with. So I would be in support of, um, the staff recommendation. Um, the only other comment I had is the last meeting, we talked about putting some type of disclosure in. And I don't know if you talked to, um, the, you know, s- city attorney, um, other municipalities that I've worked in, they do have, um, had to put language in their codes to basically say, the city has nothing to do with CCNRs. They don't enforce them. However, CCNRs can be more restrictive than what the ordinance says. That way, they don't go to a lot of expense trying to say, gee, I'll add a fourplex to my property, where the CCNRs say one house per lot. And I've worked on tons of subdivisions and when you do the CCNRs, most of them historically only allow one house per lot. So even though the legislature went barreling down this path, I don't think, now if no one opposes it, the city has nothing to do with it, but at least it gives people pause that, gee, what are the CCNRs? Most people don't even know what they are. Um, I mean, even some builders, and we've had that happen. They're like, well, wait a minute, the code lets us, zoning code lets me do this and my HOA is telling me I can't.
I would ask that whatever version you vote on, make that a condition that I add that disclosure.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
Okay, Mary?
So, um, let's say worst-case scenario, we go with one, we remove that land use, but this becomes a problematic, you know, people get real creative. I don't, I don't know what happens. There's some unintended consequences that are down the line. And we, we, you know, city says, we, we really should revisit this and put a CUP process on this. Does that, it, does that put the city even in more danger of Prop two oh seven? Claims because now you would require a CUP? I mean, are we better off to go with any extra protection and remove it later if it's, proves to be useless?
I mean, I, I, it. It's, 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 it's hard to say, right? I mean, sometimes we wanna, we wanna reach out and regulate a lot of things. And we want to try to resolve the problems in ways that we can for things that we can't, if that makes sense, right? I think some of the frustration, right, is when we see a party, short-term rental house. And it's, you know, it's eight bedrooms, eight bathrooms, and they're having big rowdy events or, you know, those kinds of things. And there's not a lot we can do. And I think that's some of the, like, more frustrating parts for staff, right? Is, especially when we have to tell a member of the public when they're living next to one of those, like, sorry, there's just not a lot we can do. What I can tell you is, is that there's a lot more attention being placed on short-term rentals. The League is working on it. Um, I don't know where it will get to. I love where the League is pushing, um, which would give us back local authority. And it's local authority without a lot of, it has to be this or it can't be that. And, you know, with a laundry list of things we tying our hands behind our back that we can't calibrate it to our own location. Um, because, I mean, here's the thing is, is these legislation, they've been good and sort of pushing the ledger and the mark in terms of zoning reform and getting us all to move in a direction and getting folks more comfortable with it. And that's a good thing. Um, but losing that local calibration and that local control, I know, has been just completely frustrating for folks. So, um, you know, I, what I would say is, let's solve the, the problem that it is rather than the problem that it's not in anticipation that it become, do you, do you know what I'm saying? Is, I, I, I always, I, I understand that there's always somebody out there who's gonna go out and do something that is just a nightmare for everybody, whether it be staff, whether it be the public. But if we constantly try to hold back our code and redesign our code for the one bad instead of the ninety-five percent good, we aren't moving the mark either. And so alls I would tell you is, is that we can take the jump. We can, you know, when we added high occupancy housing, we faced Prop two oh seven. Um, at that time, we have over two hundred HOH waivers already. So, I mean, how, but there still was not the storm of new projects that came in. And I ha, I've only maybe seen one or two of those waivers ever u- utilized. So, um, I guess that's what I would tell you, right? Is that, is that there the potential that something's gonna happen that you didn't really like and didn't really want? Sure, sure, there is that potential, but that's not the majority of what's happening within the code. And so how do we want to react and move forward? That's all.
And I, I appreciate that. I, I think from like what I see is there's so few tools that we have in this state because it does lean so heavily to property rights and such. Um, that I, I'm always, um, because it does lean so heavily to property rights and such, that I, I'm always hesitant to, to let go of, you know, a guardrail.
Me too.
That's just, that's how I feel about it, so.
I've been doing this for twenty-seven years now. And...
You looked at your watch for that?
Yeah. It's been a minute, twenty-seven years, and definitely how I started and my thought process as a planner has completely changed and evolved, and I get it. I understand the guardrail, but I think that applying, sometimes we put too many guardrails on, and it bites us in the face. And that we do, you know, you, if you lose out on the good for the perfect, I hate to, you know, say that's the case, but you'll lose out on the good.
Any other comments or questions from the commission, commissioners?
Can I ask a question?
Maybe.
Tiffany, can you clarify version one versus version two? What, if I came in with a fourplex, what would my parking requirements be under each version?
So, under version one, if you came in with a fourplex, your parking requirement would be four. If you came in under version two with a fourplex...
And it was HOH.
And it was HOH? You'd provide more parking. So, more parking is required for that HO, that's the only reason it's kept. The, I mean, the CUP and the, the parking, that's what you get, is additional parking.
Is that the same if you were going for a triplex or a duplex? There's...
If you are, if you come in for a fourplex, and all of the units are less than seven bedrooms and five bathrooms, then you're going to provide four parking spaces. If one of the units is over seven bedrooms and five bathrooms, you're going to provide a higher number of parking spaces, and it's going to be on a per-bedroom ratio.
But again, that's highly unlikely in a fourplex. So, that, basically, the parking levels are the same in version one or version two, because more than likely, nobody's going to come in with a seven-bedroom fourplex, that that's going to be pretty hard to achieve on a, on the lot that they would have.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Alex, for that question. Do you have any other questions, Alex?
No, I just, I think that, in my experience, part of why high occupancy housing was applied to smaller units was this fear of parking. I also think the city man, can mandate these parking requirements, but I also think that developers can understand their market, and if there is a demand for parking, that they, there's not, there would be nothing stopping them from providing it. So, that if I decided to build the fourplex, that it might make sense for me to have more than four parking spaces.
Right. And then, the, also, though, if we're not requiring more than four parking spaces, unless they have seven bedrooms, then the cost might be less to the builder. So, and what we're trying to achieve is maybe more affordable housing by having middle housing. And, you know, I've said this before, that, you know, my first home in Flagstaff was a duplex. It was something I could afford, and then I was able to move up to a single-family home, but I don't think if I, you know, at the time, and this is back in the seventies, if I was buying a home, then I, you know, I, I, there was no way I could have afforded a home otherwise. So, that's what I'm hoping to see, is that we have more affordable housing with the middle housing. So, I can understand why version one would be a preferred version. I, I didn't see that at first. Are there any other comments or questions from commissioners? If not, I will call for the general public, and Tyler Denham has asked to speak, so, Tyler, if you can come up and give your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Tyler Denham. I live at 538 South Fontaine Street. So, I'm speaking today as the Executive Director of Flagstaff for Affordable Housing, and I'm here to express support for the middle housing ordinance, specifically the citywide approach. That approach better serves Flagstaff's housing goals, particularly to increase the variety of available housing. Adjust this real quick. Citywide also avoids some of the issues with displacement that would come with concentrating those property rights in central, older neighborhoods. And areas like Townside, Southside, and Northside are already brimming with middle housing, which is great. The real benefit is in incorporating middle housing into new developments, and making sure that they better resemble existing neighborhoods. Also, I've been following the House Bill 2721 conversation as it plays out across different cities, and I can say with absolute certainty that the, the ordinance under consideration tonight is the best in the state, and by a long shot, too. So, every other Arizona city is pursuing a version of it that produces far less housing, concentrates it in vulnerable neighborhoods, and is more complicated to implement. I mention this because I believe the city staff and the members of the public, including yourselves, that have weighed in on this, to create this version of the ordinance deserve a lot of praise, and if we get it over the finish line, I expect it will generate a lot of buzz at the state level, and an acknowledgement of Flagstaff as a leader in the state, which I'm super excited about. Finally, while I'm so excited to see this ordinance go through, I want to mention, I'm also looking forward to the results of the code analysis project, because we'll need to update property development standards to really unlock middle housing. But that's all I got. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Tyler? I don't know that we can answer them in fifty-three seconds, but, thank you very much. Christine, do you want to make a motion? Because you had something in there that...
Yeah.
Give you a minute or two. No other questions, or did, I know that Christine wanted to add something to...
It could be as simple as just CCNR's disclosure, and I know exactly what you mean, and can rely on what you've already said.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve PZ 250027, Middle Housing Zoning Code text amendment, with the recommendation to the City Council for approval, including middle housing version number one, in addition to adding a disclaimer regarding CCNRs.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion to that motion? Any questions, discussion? Discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. And now, we'll move on to miscellaneous items to and from commission members.
Oh, I just want to thank you all for doing this rescheduled meeting tonight, instead of last week, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. I want to thank the staff for all their hard work in both of these items, and especially this one, so hopefully, yeah, hopefully this will be voted on by the City Council and pass as well. So, if there's no other miscellaneous items, other than their miscellaneous talking, can you tell them a teacher? Yeah, this, yeah. If there's no other miscellaneous from to and from commissioners, we are adjourned at 6:01 PM. Thank you.